Oh, would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands on my nation under God, in whose physical liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the fourth meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners for the year 2001. Usually we have a little word of wisdom as we begin our meeting, and my calendar for today quotes Washington Irving as saying, "Great minds have purpose; others have wishes." Uh, Mrs. Bassey, I believe you have a group you'd like to introduce?
Yes. We have a group here, a group of students from Amhersteele High School. Welcome, and it's a pleasure to have you here. Thanks for coming. Madam Chair, if we can take one more minute, I have some awards here that I'd like to present. It will only take a minute.
True.
These are awards that I'd like to present on behalf of the board to Douglas Johnson, Elizabeth Rummip, I'm sorry, I said them wrong, and Shirley Johnson. And the awards are for Good Citizen Award, who has been in the public and gratitude and appreciation for his active participation in the public health and the end of the brief with the help of well. A pleasure. Thank you very much. [applause] Three, I'm curious, uh, here's sort of our meeting for the last, what, three, four years? And we're pretty capable, average citizens. Thank you very much.
Oh, please, please do Shirley.
Well, I want to say this to the high school students. That is very important for any citizen of the United States or any government to be watching their government and participating in some way. It could be something watching or monitoring, but even run through office eventually and learn about all the aspects of it. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Shirley. I would suggest that these two ladies that you are hearing speak are students of government.
Thank you, Elizabeth Rummip from the NICS. I would happily let this occasion go by even without thanking you for committing us to ask questions and to get the kinds of answers that very often we do get. And also, one of the more important aspects of being here with some regularity, rather than just popping in at a moment when something, when your office is being gored. One of the advantages of being here with some regularity is, as I have said before, to see the tremendous range of things that you all have to deal with and the complexity of it, and as important, if not maybe more important, to get a very good idea of the county officials who come and give information or answer questions or explain their requests. It gives one a very good sense of just exactly how professional and competent and informed these people are, and so that when people talk about governmental officials, I think from my experience here, I have a far more positive aspect in general and in particular than might otherwise have been the case.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
You know, sometimes I don't think that people realize how important their input is, their concerns. We need to hear from everyone in the community, and this is the only way that we can best serve the community. I appreciate everybody being here. Thank you.
And I would just like to, a couple of members of this class from, um, Mary Amhersteele have been very active in the political process in the last year or so, and I would like to encourage the rest of you to get involved. Really, really would. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, under resolutions, I need motion to approve the Job and Family Services Skills Program.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Provisions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
There's one advance today for $1,500,000 for our community mental health. This is upfront necessary funds to cover their medical claims and for their reimbursement by the state. Questions?
Um, Shirley's here. Shirley's here. Is this a normal procedure that we do?
Yes.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Repositions? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye, with the exception of 267 and 270.
Grab it, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Ms. Golsky, your opinion?
Sorry.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employments from the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Commissioners. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, there is some discussion. Madam Chair, with all due respect, I have a problem with a couple of issues on the summary sheet. First, I'm confused and concerned with how number two got on the summary sheet. We discussed this in executive session, and I thought at that time that we had decided to hold these up for a week. Commissioner Moore wanted to review, um, the applications, and I wanted to review the job description. And all of a sudden, they're on the summary sheet, and I think this needs to be explained. How, given?
After the executive session, we, in an executive session, we discussed the appointment to the 911 director. After a long discussion on who we felt that should be the 911 director, I wanted more information regarding Robin Jones' original application. And so I asked for the job description and the resume, which I got within 20 minutes of the meeting. After reviewing it, I asked Mr. Cortez to pass out the same, well, the same information that I want, I want to make sure the other two commissioners received. So within the 20 minutes, I believe they got the information during the half hour of the meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So after seeing that, I felt that why wait another week to make a decision? Since I was, I was comfortable with, uh, Robin Jones as a director, so therefore I felt we could just bring it to a public meeting and discuss it, which is what we're going to do right now. So that's, that's, that's how it came on, I thought it was going to come up on another one, I guess it comes up on the Personnel Action Summary Sheet.
Well, recently, the turnover's been awfully high over there, and this is a very important agency, in my opinion. Life or state of that agency. And, uh, with the turnover, and she has been, uh, the, I don't know, interned director over there, and this has been happening while she has been ahead of the department. And if we've got problems there, I think that we should really review them before we go any further with promoting someone.
No, I agree. I mean, my concern is this. I think you, the original director left in July, or end of June, and we've gone six or seven months without a director, and my concern is that, uh, we don't have a leader in there. I feel like the, as an interim supervisor, you don't have the authority to implement. And 26 turnovers in two years, not under the last six months is too high. And the only way to make people accountable for it is to put them in a position and let them act. And I can tell you right now, the way Robin's gonna, I think she's accepted, if she accepts it, then she will be watched for the next 12 months. She will have to be watched for the next 12 months. I expect testing to be done at 911. I don't expect people, I mean, I've talked to, uh, people in the union end and management there, and I want to basically give a hands-off approach and say, "Okay, you got a year to make it happen. Get testing, get the right people in there, and stop the turnover." And the only way to monitor that, and the only way to watch it, is to do it and move on. And we got a year to watch it. And I'm hoping Mr. Cortez will have an evaluation, uh, evaluation forms for every director that works for us, so that 12 months from now, we can look at everyone's performance and make decisions. If it works, I'll work him next year.
Well, I'm really concerned. She has been in this position for a while, and nothing has changed, and whatever is wrong there has to be corrected. And I think that this really has to be looked into before you put someone in a position of director who's been directing for quite a while now and hasn't done the job.
She's been the acting director.
It's the same thing, acting director and director. She's directing right now.
I do not believe that acting director and director are the same, and I believe that Robin has filled in on an interim basis on two occasions, and I hope that she has the technical knowledge and the experience behind the agency to do a good job for Lorraine County citizens. And, uh, I checked with at least one of her references yesterday, and the agencies, in addition to the people that are served by this agency, we have several fire and police and the Sheriff's Department who interact with this agency, and, uh, I've received good comments about her relationships with these agencies and the job that she has done in the past. And, uh, an acting person is not the same as a person actually in charge. They are on an interim basis until their replacement is named or until they're named to that position. And I believe that we have some work to do at 911, and, uh, I think that, um, Robin Jones can start us on the right track, and I think that she deserves the opportunity to be named director of that agency, and I will support this motion.
Which leaves an opening as a supervisor underneath her, so, um, the Senate publicly say that there may be an opening, so, I think someone wishes to speak, do we have that?
Yes, I think we should be allowed to speak. I'd like to hear from them.
Uh, ma'am, would you come to the microphone and state your name, please?
Yes, my name's Judy Ferry, and I was wondering...
Can you speak a little louder, Ms. Ferry? Uh, the people in the back can hear too well.
Okay. My name's Judy Ferry, and I am, uh, wondering, were the other applicants reviewed this year? Were they interviewed at all this year? I know there was another applicant in there in fact, my husband. And, uh, Mr. Moore, you did call the house, because my husband called to speak to you. He asked you to call back before 3:30 because he had to go to work. And you called back at 2:30 as he's pulling out of the driveway. So I asked you to call back the next day and not realizing it was Saturday because he'd worked the weekend, and you said you'd call back Monday or Tuesday. We haven't heard from you yet. And so I'm just wondering, he has not received a call to come in to be interviewed for this application, I mean, for this job. He also has turned in recommendations. Other people have sent in letters and all. How can it be so one-sided? He's got 18 years of service, working with the Sheriff's Department and Communications. And even on the application, I believe there was a question or a statement you had to be, uh, amateur radio operator. I'm not sure if Robin is or not, I'm not cutting anybody down, but I know he is that, and that may be a minor question, but if there is a tragedy in all communications go out, it is important. So I feel that his application wasn't looked at completely and fully. And, uh, I just wondered why they weren't checked out completely. Thank you very much.
I have some other concerns, too, because, you know, the information is not being updated at 911, because we've got annexations, several annexations that have come through. And I don't, from my understanding, 911 is not updating the information in the computers, and therefore those, um, the emergency operators could be sending emergency services to the wrong jurisdictions. If that happens, then there's a longer wait for whoever's on the other end that needs that service, because they're going to have to send someone else out there. So there's just a lot of other little things that are involved, and that's why I think that we should actually review and go through those applications again, and if you're not satisfied with the applications, advertise again so that we get the right person in this position once and for all. And, and like you said, you just said it, there's been 26, turnover's 26, there's another one right here on the agenda, termination. We're, we're training these people. Are we training them properly? I don't know, but we're training them right now, and then all of a sudden, they're gone, someone else comes in, before they're even trained. We've got someone else in there, before they're even trained, they're put on the, on the system on, for telephone calls. This is not right, it's being, it's happening now.
Excuse me, I take exception to that statement, Commissioner Bassi. I do not believe that these people are put on the console before they're properly...
Well, I'm telling you right now that we've got somebody going on this weekend that hasn't gone to Pennsylvania for the final certification. Now...
They are not on the system by themselves, they are not unsupervised.
Nevertheless, they're on the system picking up calls, and here's another person, I'd like to have an exit interview with this emergency, um, systems operator before we terminate this person, too. I'd like to have exit interviews with these people to find out what's actually happening.
And these discussions, the reason why this is a heated discussion is because we do not have a director, and we have not had a director since July. I want to take this off, put someone in as a director, make that director accountable for this type of actions. So we have 12 months to take a look at her. I think all three of us have the people we wanted to put in there. The fact is, I did not want this going on for another 90 days. I looked at resumes and piled this tall from September, is when they last ran the application process. I reviewed them all, and personally, I didn't see too many people that I felt was qualified, because I felt the position was more of a managerial, a director who has to implement policies and follow those policies, and hire a strong supervisor to implement those policies, testing and reporting to us when we do have a problem with 911. Right now, it looks like the three of us are running 911, and I'm trying to take that off the table by putting a director in there and be done with it, and then we can watch her performance. I agree, 911 is important, but it's time, I just feel that it's time to move on and let, see, I mean, an interim director does not have the same power as a director, and so it's time to move on.
Well, I don't have a specific person for the position. I don't care who goes there, as long as they're qualified and that that agency runs properly, because we're talking about lives that could be at stake with that agency.
Do you have other, uh, concerns about the Personnel Summary Sheet that you...
Well, just those two. I'd like, uh, someone to have an exit interview, number three, and I'm making an exception to number two.
I don't believe we provide for exit interviews. We've discussed this in the past. We have no provision for that, do we?
We have discussed it many times in the past.
Mr. Cortez?
Yes and no. So here we go.
Well, give us the yes and then the no.
The, the yes part is, we do have provisions to conduct exit interviews.
We do?
Yes, we do, and we've had them for some time.
Where are they contained?
They're contained in Personnel Manual, and we've had a, uh, ad hoc policy for many, many years. And, uh, and a lot of our departments actively do them, Human Services, both majors. The no part comes in, too, is you don't do exit interviews on employees you're terminating. And, uh, what are they going to say? You're, you're removing them from employment forcefully. You normally do exit interviews on employees that are leaving on their own cognizance, their own desires, and you like to find out why they're leaving. Is it money, is it, uh, is it position, better job? But when you terminate somebody, I, I think that takes away any notion that we're going to find out, uh, that they have good feelings about the job.
Well, I don't think it's the feelings. I would like to know if these people are properly trained. I mean, this person, for example, is a new person. Why, why can't this person be trained? Why isn't the person accepting whatever training is there for them? Maybe they, maybe the problem is in the training.
If, if, not to disagree with you, Commissioner, but if we've done all our proper procedures in-house and we've done our homework correctly, we know the answers to all those things before we terminate somebody, so we wouldn't have to ask those things on an exit interview.
But you always learn from people. That's how you're going to know. You talk to the staff, and then you'll know the problems.
I, I, I'm, once again, not to be augmented, I just don't know what we would glean from having an exit interview on somebody we're firing. Uh, it, it, it's a traumatic situation to start with, and then we're going to sit down and we're going to question them about, uh, what the, uh, the problems may have been in the workplace. I'm sure they're going to have a whole roster of them.
You don't have to do it verbal. You can give them a form that says, "Here's an exit interview. If you'd like to give us your comments on how you were treated, just send it." We put it in their file. There's nothing wrong with that, because most people are terminated. It's an uncomfortable feeling, anyway.
Exactly.
And so why not just put it as a form letter? They can mail it back to us, and we put it in their file. I mean, we've done that in corporate, in the corporate world, I know they do it whether you're terminated or whether you resign, and then you put it in the file, and whether or not, what we do with that information is up to us. I don't have a problem going just...
Certainly, that's the direction.
Because I think it'd be better to go in a letter format, though, when you're terminating, because it gives people time to cool down and maybe think clearly than the day that you're terminating them.
I, I agree, Commissioner. Obviously, if you, if you...
This should not be a director's job, though, it should be maybe just...
No, it would be the Human Resource Department's responsibility. Mr. Ford is out, meeting with the Union at County Home, so he wasn't able to be here today. Uh, so I, I can, I can make a direction that we would mail the form to the, along with the termination notice, uh, to the employee's home, if that will meet the desires.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Is there any discussion there?
No.
Clerk, do you call the rules, please?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassi?
Exception to two, and, and I'd like to hold three until we get the interview, but it's my two exceptions, and I abstain unwon.
Approve an entry into contract between the Board of Commissioners and Joseph Farren and Associates Architect for additions and renovations to Lorraine Medina County Community Base Correction Facility at 9882 Murray Ridge Road, Elary, Ohio. Contract is in the amount of $600,000 and is being funded by the State of Ohio.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Bassi?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to approve an entry into the following contracts, of the Job and Family Services Department. This is a purchase of service contracts, first one with Christian Life Daycare Center in Lorraine, Ohio, for child daycare services effective January 28, 2001, ending January 27, 2002. Salvation Army Good Shepherd of Elary, Ohio, for child daycare services effective retroactive to December 1, 2000, starting November 30, 2001. Erie Shores Computer Incorporated for design of a childcare webpage in the amount of $5,433.88. Contract is effective retroactive to January 18, 2001, through June 30, 2001. Child Care Resource Center to provide training to childcare center directors in the areas of day-to-day operations of their centers' management of staff, marketing of the center, and center finances. Child Care Resource Center to provide certified home daycare providers with business training allowing the provider to enhance and strengthen their home-based business in the amount of $3,150. This contract is effective retroactive to January 18, 2001, through June 30, 2001. Four D service contracts between the Child Support Enforcement Agency and Lorraine County Prosecutor, effective retroactive to January 1, 2001, through December 31, 2001. Breakdown is as follows. Non-federal matching funds, $129,540. Federal matching funds, $251,460. For a total of $381,000. The Child Support Enforcement Agency and Domestic Relations, the Juvenile Court, effective retroactive to January 1, 2001, through December 31, 2001. Breakdown is as follows. The non-federal matching funds, $204,812, which is county and state. Federal matching funds, $397,575, federal monies, for a total of $602,387. And the Child Support Enforcement Agency and Lorraine County Criminal Courts, effective retroactive to January 1, 2001, through December 31, 2001. Breakdown is as follows. Non-matching, excuse me, non-federal matching funds, $25,500. Federal matching funds, $49,500, for a total of $75,000. Peggy Thorpe, if you have any job and family services, have any questions?
Who's here, please?
Peggy Thorpe. Mary Lou Golsky's also in.
Do, do we have any questions on anything?
I have one I'd see. Karen, is Karen Cleveland here? Did she? Well, anyway, I talked with her in regards to this one, for the design of the childcare webpage. I think that can be done in-house. Mary Lou, have you looked into doing that in-house?
Would you state your name, please?
My name is Peggy Thorpe, T-H-O-R-P-E, and I'm from the fiscal area of Job and Family Services. On the contract with Erie Shores for the webpage, on the funding for this program is with, uh, state funding. It's child, uh, childcare quality funding, so there would be no accounting monies coming, um, from this program. And the, uh, the page, the webpage would be a link to the, the agency's webpage that's currently being designed also.
Can this money be used for any other service?
Uh, it can be used for childcare quality funding.
Okay, so...
The, when that allocation was received, um, several different areas, um, funding was allocated towards, and this is one that was, um, decided with the, uh, the area childcare consortiums that they wanted to look into funding this program or the site.
Can we hold that until we see if we can do this in-house, and possibly this money could be used for some other service?
Mrs. Golsky, would you care to address that as Director of the Agency?
Uh, my name's Mary Lou Golsky. I'm G-O-L-S-K-I, I'm the Director. Excuse me. Um, the reason that we selected Erie Shores is because they've, they've been through this, they developed the webpage for Huron County and also Erie County, and the state directed us to look at their webpages because of the quality that, that they had produced. So, um, we actually got a, a good deal by, um, using them, because they've already been, it's the same rules and regulations, it's just a matter of, uh, tailoring it to Lorraine County's needs. So I think that, um, we would, at this point, it would put the, um, the webpage development, uh, behind. This money has to be spent by June 30th. It's part of, as Peggy said, it's part of the quality, uh, pot of money, and I don't know what this, what the county could do for us that Erie Shores already hasn't done.
Thank you.
Already hasn't done?
Correct.
Have they been working on this project already?
Um, I, I believe so.
It says the contract is retroactive to January 18.
Correct.
So... What Erie, what Erie Shores has done so far is given us a prototype on, on a webpage, typing up some samples of the work that they can do.
We had to bid this out, I believe.
Correct.
So when they bid it out, they, they had to give us an example of what they would do. Uh, the county did not, uh, respond to the, to the bid. We had...
Do we have anyone else? We had three bidders. Erie Shores was the superior bidder of the, the best quality, best price.
Well, I'm not saying that I would require, or it would require that the county bid on this job, I'm just saying that it can be done in-house. These are, this type of thing can be done in-house with our technicians. I don't know if you have computer technicians over there or not, but I know we do.
Um, my understanding was Erie Shores did the county's webpage.
Well, our people did it, most of the work. We had compiled the information, and I don't know enough about computers. I was just wishing that Karen Cleveland would be here, and she could probably answer some of our questions, but I think most of our people did a lot of that work.
Well, we're, I mean, Mr. Cortez, are we not meeting on Tuesday with, uh...
Yes. On Tuesday, uh, we will be reviewing a proposal for assistance with our ECOM as IT, Internet, uh, web design, repair, I would say the full package, uh, with, with, the proposals will be here tomorrow, and I'll be distributing to the Commissioners for that meeting on Tuesday. Uh, I, I spoke with Ms. Golsky early on about this website, and, uh, at the time we spoke, Erie Shores was our company that we were using, uh, and we discussed using Erie Shores, and they did get other quotes. Uh, I was, I was not aware, uh, that we had the ability in-house to do that at that time. Karen, Karen had a migraine this morning, so that's probably why she's not here.
I saw her here earlier.
Right. Right. Okay, so, I don't know that holding up this project is going to...
I'll take about $5,000. There you go. The webpage is already designed.
I guess that's what I'm suggesting, it's not a great amount of money at this point, and then maybe we can use that and move forward from here on how we handle these issues.
Right. Do you have questions on the other, any of the other items?
No, I don't.
Okay. I'll move to approve items outlined in number 11.
One second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye. But I would hope that in the future, we can get someone in-house to design these webpages, because I don't think it's that technical.
I understand, Commissioner, and I'll make sure that that matters with you.
We do have a question, and...
I'm sorry.
We...
Could you state your name, please?
It's Alex Baldwin, and I'm a high school teacher, the high school students here.
I thought you were one of the students. Welcome, Mr. Baldwin.
It happens all the time. It happens all the time. I was just looking at the Erie Shores computer contracts. I know that for further uses of computer technology and stuff, it might be an idea that you guys think about maybe farming some of the stuff out to our high schools, or any of the high schools in the area. I know we have many comparable students that are probably going to be after graduation, or be going, they're systems, system analysts, and they're going to be graduating with this technology already. And why not give them a chance to get some grades in school and actually do some of the work for you guys also? I think it'd be an avenue for you guys to try to just explore and develop.
That's a great, that's a great avenue. What we're trying to do is we're getting a consultant to help us, guide us on how the proper way to manage an IS department, and that's one of the ideas we had.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's a lot of fabulous students that could actually, that have so much more knowledge than, like, a lot of the people that are in the business today. So, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your suggestion. Madam Kirk, will you continue, please?
We need to authorize the appointment of a member to serve on the Lorain County Community College Board of Trustees. This term will be effective January 25, 2000, expiring January 24, 2006.
This vacancy has occurred because Dr. Marvin Anderson, who has served on the Community College Board of Trustees for the past 13 years, has asked not to be reappointed. I believe that this is probably one of the most sought-after appointments in Lorain County, and since I've been on the board for the past 10 years, it's caused a lot of discussion. And we have before us four very qualified candidates, and it will be very difficult to choose one, but unfortunately, that's the job we have to do. The term did expire on the 22nd. We have 60 days to make this appointment, but I think if we could come to some kind of agreement, that it would be best to, if we could make an appointment and move on.
What's the proper way to do this, since there's four candidates?
I'm not sure there is a proper way. Well, I would move, if there, I would move to appoint Minnie Reed Young. I believe that we should have a woman representation on that board. She has other redeeming qualities. Oh, yeah, she's a teacher. I mean, she's a retired teacher. She has a lot of good qualities.
Rita Campfield's out there, and she's on the board.
Rita is on the board. Rita, would you stand, please? Rita Campfield's a governor's appointment to Lorain County Community College Board, and she's also a Loraine Township trustee, among other things. Welcome, Rita.
Thank you, Rita. I look, my, oh, we got, we have a motion, so I guess we can, we can discuss.
Well, and we've always been rather informal here about our discussions.
I can tell you what I was, what my thoughts were?
I think that as a Commissioner, you're entitled to speak what your thoughts are.
I'm reading Robert's Rules of Order. I don't want to get in trouble here, so, okay.
Well, like I said, we've always been rather informal.
Well, I was looking at Dr. Anderson's service, and I was trying to find somebody very similar in the education background that he, that he had. And I just came up really quick last week, and I met with Dr. James Calvin Buford, who I supported the resume towards both of you this week to recommend that he continue what Dr. Anderson has started. And that was my proposal for the candidate for the board. So, he's, he's been, he's been an educator his whole life. He's retired, and I think he will work well with the current board and continue with what Dr. Church has done a good job of at the county, so...
Well, having said that, I think that we ought to, I would like to take this opportunity to announce to the public who the other two applicants for the job are too, so that you will know what a difficult task this is going to be for the board to decide. Evelyn France, who has a very big history in Lorain County with education and government and financing, and the fourth applicant was Larry Jones of Erie Shores Limited. And when I read his, Erie Shores Computer, when I read his background, I learned two things about him that I didn't know, too. So, that's one of the nice things about receiving these applications and being able to look at the backgrounds, and it's a very difficult decision, and I suppose it won't get any less painful or less difficult if it's delayed further. And so, there is a motion on the floor, and I will second the motion to appoint Minnie Reed to this board.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Thank you for your thoughtful consideration to each member of the board.
Okay, we need to authorize the following, the microenterprise loan program. The first would be to establish the microenterprise loan program to be called LAMP. We need to authorize the Budget Director to create a special fund for this LAMP program. And I also want to add that this is upon state auditor's approval of the funds. We need to appropriate $50,000 from the county's general fund for the LAMP, and authorize the use of the $50,000 from the county's revolving loan fund for this program as recommended by the Community Improvement Corporation.
I have one question. I didn't understand what you added, Roxanne, would you please?
That also it has to be approval of the state auditors for the funds.
Oh, it's for the creation of this fund.
Right. She already had mentioned that we should add that one.
Ah, yes. Mr. Cordez, would you like to expound on this a little bit?
I would love to. I would love to, because it's such a wonderful program, but I don't want to steal Mr. Twining's thunder.
I'm sorry. I'm terribly sorry.
As much as I've tried to assist him, this has been his baby, and he's anxiously waiting to speak.
My apologies, Mr. Twining.
And I have a lot of thunder, too. My name is Ron Twining, T-W-I-N-I-N-G. I am the Director of the Community Economic Development Department, and actually, the person that has worked hardest on this is Melanie Long, and she's in the audience today as well, one of our staff members. But I will present this. In October, we came before the Board of Commissioners asking permission to apply for state LAMP or microenterprise loan funds with the State Department in order to have a new tool in our economic development program, which would allow us to loan out monies to small business and, as well, startup businesses. Loans could be as small as $250,000, and the application that we sent to the state said that we would go as high as $10,000 per applicant. That required a commitment from one local bank. We did have a commitment for $500,000 from First Merit Bank. We had an understanding that the Board of Commissioners were contributing $50,000 for this program from the general fund, and we had requested $39,805 from the Department of Development to provide the other portion for training and business plan preparation and things like that, as putting together a nearly $200,000 program. We finally, two weeks ago, received a letter from the Department of Development. It informed us, good news and some other news. I won't say whether it's good or bad, but the good news is that our application was reviewed and approved by the Department of Development, but they had received in excess of 33 applications for this program statewide, and the money requested exceeded the amount that was committed. They looked at the county's revolving loan fund program, which was initiated by the Department of Development through a grant in 1968. They felt that we had a good fund balance there, and while they approved our grant and we had requested $39,805, they suggested that with the appropriate approval of the Board of Commissioners and the CIC that operates the program for us through the citizens, they would authorize up to $50,000 for this program. We have acquired the approval at last Thursday's meeting of the CIC for the county. We're here today asking the Commissioners to take the four steps that are identified in the resolution, the first of which is to allow Mr. Ocasie and his staff to get the special account set up through the state auditor, and we would hope that this resolution is approved and would be happy to answer any questions. We also received, I should mention, a letter this week from a second bank, Lorain National Bank, committing, I think that was for $200,000, for the first year, if we needed that funds, depending on the activity. With that letter, we may in fact adjust, and we can do that easily with the state, the amount ceiling limit of $10,000, and take that to $20,000 or $25,000. We have met several times with a committee to help organize and review this process and the administrative rules and guidelines, so we feel that we are at the point that we need to set up the special fund and get a commitment for the general fund and the revolving loan fund as the local portion. This would be county-wide, it would include Alaria and Lorain, so it would be truly a county-wide program in all jurisdictions.
Thank you, Mr. Twining. I think it's a wonderful program, that a lot of people have worked for a long time to put together to assist us in that amount of development. Did the Board have any questions?
No, but Ron, I want to thank you especially, because years ago, I tried to get this in the county, because I always had this feeling that everyone has a God-given talent for survival, and usually, a lot of businesses start out of a person's garage or their home, and this would assist, and especially with welfare reform and people losing their jobs today, I think that this is a way for them to get a start with their God-given talent. And also, Ron, would you talk a little bit about the revolving loan, the difference between this one, because these are both to assist businesses, and the revolving loan has a higher limit that we can loan out?
Yeah, typically, the revolving loan, we tend to only take companies that are seeking, and there are certain parameters and guidelines that they must follow, but, but in a nutshell, unless a business needs $40,000 or more, we usually do not consider our county's revolving loan fund, and we felt that there were a couple of gaps in our economic tools, just in affording or offering money to companies and businesses. Not everybody needs $40,000, and we didn't feel comfortable encouraging somebody that may need $5,000 or $6,000 to get bigger quicker in order to be eligible for the revolving loan fund limit of $40,000. And this certainly with a base of as little as $250,000 in a loan request, and $10,000, or if we actually increase it to $20,000 or $25,000, will fill the largest need. Obviously, small business has always been the major employer for not only Lorain County, but the State of Ohio and the nation. So, that is our first need, and we are right now exploring options to fill the middle void that we feel needs to be adjusted, and that is between, say, the $15,000 or $20,000 loan, up to the $40,000 or even $50,000 loan, and we have some ideas and are working on that presently on behalf of the board.
Ron, have you informed the Workforce Investment Board about these two different loans?
We have not, and the only reason we haven't, we would like this resolution so that we have firm footing first.
Well, that's what I've been hearing.
We have not hidden it from the public or any board. We've asked for input, but as soon as we have an affirmative action on this legislation, then we will let everybody know.
Thank you.
We didn't want to be accused of jumping the gun.
Well, Ron, also, this program isn't just limited to LMI, right?
That's right.
I think that bears just a tiny bit of understanding by the board that there is no requirement that this go just to low and moderate income, where we set the program up.
Yeah, typically, a lot of the programs through the Department of Development have, you know, the connection to job creation or LMI. This one is really more towards job creation and does not have any extra bonus points or any connections strictly to low and moderate, which is what LMI stands for, individuals. Obviously, if you are LMI and you're looking to start a business, you're just as eligible for these funds as anybody else. And the critical part that the state has promoted this, and it's been very successful in, is either a startup business or a small business, you're usually very good at the job you want to perform, the product you want to produce, or the service that you're willing to do for people, but you may not know all of the tax laws and regulations, the accounting and everything else. And so, there's actually a business plan process, an educational plan process, it can take up to 12 weeks as a part of this before we actually loan out, and it really will help the bank, and that's where their commitment is. Banks quite often get enthusiastic people with bright ideas, but, you know, they don't have the business plan together and maybe the experience, and so, they're not sure that they're completely bankable, and this has provided them an opportunity to work with us and say, you know, this, this has some potential. But we need to have some assurance that the company's going to be viable and make it, and so, we have the state money, which is the revolving loan funds, and the general fund money, which will make sure, working with at least three identified training sources here in the county, that they will get the necessary training to, to help them become a successful business. Once they're finished with that, then they're taken over to the bank, and the bank then will, you know, work with us to loan the money from their commitment letter. Is Norm here? Norm Bliss is here. Norm may want to comment. He's from First Merit Bank, if I might ask, for a few minutes for Norm, because he would like to make a presentation briefly in support, I believe, of this program. First Merit was first unfolded.
Sure, Norm, come forward, please.
My name is Norman Bliss, and I am Vice President, Community Reinvestment Officer of First Merit Bank. Briefly, the First Merit Bank's commitment to the microloan program is part of an overall initiative that we have made to invest in Lorain County. About three years ago, with the merger with First Merit Bank, First Merit Bank committed to reinvest over $400 million in Lorain County over a five-year period. One component of that agreement is $500 million to fund microloan programs throughout Lorain County. We are extremely pleased that the county has really stepped to the table and has put together not only the administrative side, but also other sources of funding that will help to ensure this program's success, and I'm just looking forward to lending those dollars in Lorain County.
Thank you, Norm. If the board has no further comments or questions, I would move for approval. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Due to award contract to Williams Brothers Builders of Alaria, Ohio, in the amount of $19,500 for the Graffton Township's building, school, and handicapped ramp, Community Development Block Ramp, this year 99 funded project to remove architectural barriers. Williams Brothers Builders was the lowest and most responsibly received, complying specifications. The entire bid amount of $19,500 will be funded with CBPG funds. The Community Development Department has reviewed and recommends approval, and Graffton Township also supports this recommendation.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Award contract to B&amp;B Wrecking and Excavating Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in the amount of $64,400 for demolition of 215 and 219 Court Street of Alaria, Ohio. B&amp;B Wrecking and Excavating Incorporated was the lowest and most responsibly received, complying with specifications. Based upon the prosecutor's opinion, it was dated January 10, 2001. The low bidder of their trucking has currently owned delinquent personal property and real estate property assets.
I would like to make a motion to table this till next week's meeting.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Approved the semi-annual revolving loan fund report for the period June 1, 2000 through December 31, 2000. Available cash balance, as of December 31, 2000, is $351,735.86. We need to authorize the President to execute on behalf of the board.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Is this, is this the fund we're going to be discussing on the 30th?
Yes, Commissioner. Commissioner Moore and I have not had an opportunity to, to discuss the revolving loan fund report. He had requested that we do so, and on Tuesday, Mr. Twining... He had requested that we do so, and on Tuesday, Mr. Twining and he and I have a meeting to go over that report and look at some of the delinquent and defaulted loans. Unfortunately, the state makes us carry those. Some of those things are ten years old, but they make them carry, they make us carry them on the books there. So, he has not had an opportunity to meet with us on that issue yet.
Could you unhold this?
After you go, whether it's a motion, yeah, I'd prefer to wait till next week to discuss it.
I have a question to Mr. Twining. Is there a timeliness issue on this report?
Yes, there is, but we've been late before. It is due by the, the end of January. The state usually gives us thirty days before they send nasty letters, three months before they put our funds on hold. So, you know, if the Commissioners would like to, to hold this for a week, it will not be a problem, but I would suggest that regardless of the discussion next week, this is still just the status report of the activities that took place during the year two thousand and the balance that we have on hand as of December thirty-first. That's all this report is.
Thank you, Mr. Twining. So, I think, I'm glad that you're going to the GND report, but you have a problem if we pass it, because it, what it is doing is reporting what has transpired.
Correct. No, that's okay. I just, I have a question that didn't get answered, so I can.
All right. Madam Kirk, you call the roll.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Vassil?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Need to reaffirm the various reappointments and new appointments to the Lorraine County Economic and Industrial Development Corporation, as approved by the LCEIDC members, that they're meeting on January eighteenth of two thousand one, and I will list the personnel. There are several.
And the members of this LCEIDC are in fact the three Commissioners and the prosecutor who was not in attendance at that meeting, so we've already approved this action once. So, I will move that we approve it again.
One second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Vassil?
Hi.
Based upon request of the county administrator, number eighteen, be placed on hold today. Any more discussion request?
Move to table?
Second.
Can we have discussions with somebody?
A motion to table is not discussable, is it? Is it? I don't know.
Well, maybe, maybe I should explain myself then before you move on the motion. How's that?
Well, no, my question is, if there's been a motion to table and it's been seconded, I'm asking the prosecutor's office, Robert Church of Burgh, is the motion to table discussable?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I, I requested that we not act on this issue this week, because I wanted to discuss it further with Mr. Ennis. We have some concerns over the wording of the resolution, specifically concerning the MOX bid. It was my intention to ask that that bid be rewarded to MOX. They had some, they were not the lowest bid. They were three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents above on a sixty, approximately sixty-four thousand dollar bid. The company that was lower was a company out of Cleveland. MOX is an employer right here in Lorraine County. I thought that, given that their net terms were better and that their delivery turnaround time was better, and there was a couple other minor issues, would show them to be the superior bid. Not to mention, which was currently on my mind, that they are a local employer right here in Alariah, and I believe that we should try to spend our tax-based dollars here and churn those dollars in our own economy in Lorraine County. I have been advised that we should proceed cautiously with, and that's why I'm asking that we table that until I have further discussion with Mr. Ennis. I will also be coming back to the board and proposing a resolution within the next week, no more than two weeks from now, recommending that we adopt a policy, high resolution of giving local preference to our employers that operate here in Lorraine County. That preference would be a certain percentage differential off of the lowest bid, i.e. basically points, for them to compete better with some of the bigger companies doing business outside Lorraine County. The board is free to choose that percentage. We, we also are free to cap that percentage. If it was a hundred thousand and we were using two or three percent, we could say two or three percent of the bid or a maximum cap of four, five thousand or ten thousand dollars. I think it's essential that we spend tax-based dollars here in Lorraine County. I think it's essential that we support business people in Lorraine County, and the churning effect of the money will more than offset the slight amount of cost increase we may have from doing that, because that money will revolve several times here in our own community and stimulate the economy here. That's why I'm doing this. Thank you.
That clause would have to be put into respect.
Yes, it would have to be.
Any further discussion? Madam Kirk, you call the roll, please.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Vassil?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi. I would like to, at this time, it's eleven o'clock, and on our schedule, we have a presentation from Mary Lou Goloski, the Director of the Job and Family Services Department, regarding the PRC program, the Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Funding and Recommendations to Be Made by the Advisory Committee. Mrs. Goloski?
Hello. Again, do I have to repeat my name again?
Have you changed it since you were here?
I didn't think so. It's Mary Lou Goloski, G-O-L-S-K-I. I'm here to talk about the PRC, which is called the Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Program. It was provided for in House Bill four oh eight, which was the major welfare reform legislation back in nineteen ninety-seven. The program is designed to provide benefits and services to needy families and low-income families who are employed. The services and benefits are not, are to be non-recurring, short-term assistance and benefits that relate to TANA. There must be a child in the home, and the, in Lorraine County, the family income can not exceed a hundred and seventy-five percent of poverty. Each county kind of designed their own program. We got community input from some focus groups, from the various stakeholders, the Human Service Planning Committee also had an opportunity to have input, and then the PRC Subcommittee of the Human Service Planning Committee made a proposal to the Commissioners and of how we would like services to look in Lorraine County. So, some of the services and benefits that we contracted for were domestic violence, shelter costs, homeless shelter, and counseling. Then we also said we would commit some dollars to family disaster services, and we have an agreement with the Red Cross when a family is burned out that will provide help with relocation or getting the home back in order. We provide contingency services, those being shelter, utility appliances, and then we also have under another category, work support, job preparation, and retention services, and those things would be purchasing tools for someone that's employed, giving, paying for employment, physicals, training, and transportation. Then in nineteen ninety-nine, the state created an additional PRC program, and they gave the Lorraine County six point eight million dollars to spend in eighteen months. That was called the PRC Development Reserve Pot of Dollars. And we, again, went through the same process with community input and the Human Service Planning Committee, and these are the, the contracts that we eventually came up with. We, we committed, do you want to know how much each doc, each program has as far as dollars or just the programs?
How many, how many are there?
There are fifteen, fifteen, sixteen. I'll just give you a sort of a summary of the kind of things that we do. We do after-school programming and summer camps, transportation, we do money management. We have a contract with the Educational Center through the County Board of Education. We have an auto loan program with First Merit. We do prepaid gas cards for someone that's employed, things like that. Now, we're close to, we're, we're close to the end of the fifteen, or the eighteen-month timeframe, and we have some unspent dollars. So, in order to not let those dollars go back to Columbus, but to make plans for how we would respent, reallocate those, we had a community forum and asked for input on, on what would be the services that we should provide, and overwhelmingly, the committee stated that we should look at utility assistance that with-